All right. Hey, everyone. Welcome. This is another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session. Welcome. I am Coach Ashley. We are joined today by our founder and creator, Greg Kilwin.
Hey, everyone. We're glad you're here, and we've got some exciting training for you today.
Absolutely. Today, we are talking about personality colors and how to close, and how those two things go together. So before we get started, let's pop over into the chat here. Let us know where you're coming in from. We're super excited to meet you all today and learn more about you and your colors. I'm going to go ahead and go over to our slides here in just a second, but first, a little bit of housekeeping. If this is your very first time joining us, welcome. We hold this training every single week and maybe just also a tiny bit of extra housekeeping while it's on the mind. We do have convention coming up here in a couple of weeks. We will have a pre-recorded training set for you for that, as well as one for the Fourth of July. We know not everyone who is a member of our community is necessarily here in the United States where we celebrate that holiday, but you will not be without training. We're going to have that for you, and you will see the details on how to attend those trainings for their live releases on YouTube, on our YouTube channel, and you'll get those details in your email. So make sure if you are not signed up yet, you go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. There's a link below the recording of this video when you watch this later on YouTube. Make sure you get those. All of these are free. These trainings are open to anyone who is interested in or is currently growing a business with Young Living. Get Oiling exists to help you grow, to help you better manage and grow your business. We have everything that you need to do it, everything, except, you know, the YL virtual office. So anyway, we're going to get into this training here in just a second. Go ahead and let us know where you're coming in from in the comments. I'm going to hop over to my slides.
Yeah, we've got Martha from Key West and Floyd from Virginia, Sam from North Mississippi. So kind of all over Georgia.
Yeah. Awesome. Awesome.
Glad you're here.
We sure are. All right. So can you see my screen okay?
Looking good.
Perfect. All right. So today, we're going to talk about closing by colors, you know, like paint by numbers, but close by colors. All right. So again, welcome. We're super excited to have you all here today. I want to ask you guys a question first. A few questions, actually. Do you know your personality color? Is this something that you have explored? We will go into more detail about what this means here in just a little bit, but if you're here right now and you know your color, let us know. Share your color with us in the comments if you know it. Curious to see. I didn't create a formal poll here because I have more questions to ask you, but do we have any color identifiers in the comments?
We do. We do. A few people here are saying they're in yellow, and actually, pretty much everyone so far is the yellow primary, a green secondary, blue secondary. Yeah.
Awesome. 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 All right. Well, again, guys, we're going to get into more of what this means here shortly. Just so you know here at the outset, if you're not familiar at all, it is very similar to the DISC, personality testing method and to personality profiling that goes all the way back to, I think it was maybe Aristotle? I forget. One of the greats. There's, anyway, whole other rabbit hole. We're not going to get into that part today. We're going to get into how this can help you grow your business. All right. So next question. Do you know and feel confident about getting to a yes? Being honest here, do you feel comfortable and confident in your ability to get a yes when you're sharing?
Lots of no's. Other no. An ugh, no.
Oh, no. Got it. Got it. So does it stress you out a bit, right? Is this thinking about getting a yes, is it stressful to you? Imagine I'm seeing those no's turning to yeses right now.
They are.
Yep.
Kelly here says, "I'm not afraid of no, I just can't get yes."
All right. All right. Well, see, there's this thing that we do, and we work ourselves up to this place where we think of getting a yes as being something that's up on the top of Mount Everest, right? It's way up there. It's this lofty thing. Obviously, everybody wants yes, but we're really nervous about how to get there, and we feel like we don't know how to get there. And so it's this thing that's just out of reach, and that's how it feels. And I'm here to let you know that it's just not true. The way that we look at yes is a lie. And today, we are going to knock that idea off of its pedestal because yes is something that you can get a lot more of in your business with a couple of very simple mindset shifts, which we will get into in detail in today's training. And also, where colors are concerned, understanding a little bit more about yourself and even more importantly, about the people you are communicating with. All right. So we're going to get into that today. Are you excited to learn about how you can close in a way that works for you? Maybe see a show of hands here. You excited to learn how to do this today? Yes. Awesome. All right. We're going to get right to it. So the first thing that we need to understand, y'all, is that yes is not this lofty thing up on a mountaintop. Yes is a byproduct of a process. And by the way, this process is exactly the same thing no matter what your primary color is. It's the same as red, as for yellow, as for green, as for blue, as for any mixture of any of these things in between. Yes is a singular byproduct of a process. That's it. So if we start looking at it as not being a thing that's up on top of the hill that we have to hike to, but just a thing that is a byproduct of flipping the cards in a deck, right? You know that there are a certain number of face cards in a deck. You just have to flip enough cards over until you reach them, right? It's very similar to that way of thinking. So if we start looking at this as more of a sorting and sifting process than a climbing and reaching process, it starts to feel a lot more achievable, right? So understand, it is a byproduct of a process. And to be completely transparent with you, I'm going to spend a lot of today teaching you about that process because that is the most important thing for you to know, that yes is a byproduct of a process that you must repeat over and over and over and over again, and you get better at getting yeses. But the fact is, is that yes is just a matter of numbers at the end of the day, and making sure that you're following up on those numbers to where you're shown. That's another part of the story. We'll get to that, too. All right. So today, we're going to cover that process and ways that you can personalize it, not change it, but personalize it according to your personality colors. All right. So today, we are going to cover, first, the two most important things that you need to know before you even begin sharing. And this is really, these two things are what are going to help you the most in seeing yes as something that's not a hurdle that you need to jump over, all right? You're also going to learn that five-step process that always leads to all the yes, okay? You're also going to learn how to invite, present, and close by colors, and how to get a yes by understanding your own color personality. All right. So to start, the process that works, like I mentioned before, is actually completely color neutral, all right? No matter how you see yourself, no matter how you have tested for your color personality, the process that works to get to yes is completely neutral and works for literally everyone, okay? That's a fact. Now, we'll dig into the colors again here in just a little bit, but first, let's get to those two most important things that you need to know before you even begin sharing. All right. So before we begin, start with why. How many of you have heard this before? A quick show of hands. Start with why. Title of a great book by Simon Sinek. By the way, I've actually utilized his golden circle in some of our trainings. You can go back and see those at youtube.com/getoiling. They're all currently free. Anyway, you start with why. Reason why you start with why is that your motivation for sharing has to be bigger than a yes. It has to be bigger than your next rank or your next commission check. Your why has to be bigger than an immediate need. And you need to be in step with your why at all times. I'll get into why this is important here in just a second. Let me tell you about the next thing that you need to have in mind, is that you need to be detached from outcomes. Meaning, when you go into a sharing situation or an inviting situation or a close, you need to be detached from outcomes. You need to not be emotionally attached to whether or not this person says yes or no, okay? The waitress doesn't cry, right? She doesn't run off into the corner and cry when you say no to dessert or coffee after a meal, right? Look at what you're doing in a very similar way. You aren't selling, just as the waitress isn't selling desserts, or at least she certainly shouldn't be. You aren't selling. You're sharing and empowering people to make better choices for themselves. And if you're chasing your why, that abundance of yes that you're looking for will always follow. If you're detached from outcomes, you'll accept that it doesn't always happen exactly when you expect it to, right? But if you're chasing your why and you're following the process, you will get all the yes you ever needed and more, all right? And no is actually a perfectly acceptable answer, and have gratitude for no when you get it because it is permission to move on to the next one, right? And the thing, too, is, and we've talked about this in previous trainings, we are sort of in a theme right now about prospecting and closing and kind of having that sales cycle conversation. No is never a, well, it's rarely, not never. No is rarely ever a no forever. There, I got it out. No often means not right now, and that necessitates follow-up. Watch our follow-up training. We'll link it in the description below in our recording, and of course, you guys can check that out on our YouTube channel. Be grateful for no. So why are these two things? Starting with why, and then, of course, having that detachment from the outcome. Why are they so important? First, asking someone for a decision, and that is yes or no, right? Asking someone for a decision is easy and simple when it looks like a drop in the bucket compared to the size of your why. We have a visitor, you guys. Here's Molly. When your why is so big and so massive, and the impact that you seek to make on the world based on what you know and what you're passionate about, when that is so big that your neighbor telling you they're not ready to buy their premium starter kit, it becomes crumbs, right, on the table as opposed to the great big cake, right? You're aiming for the big, big thing. You're going to get lots of yeses and lots of no's along the way. We start to make this less of a mountain and more of a molehill, right? Getting a yes, asking for a decision, or a no, yes or a no, when you're focused on your why. That's why the why is so critical. And here's the thing, when you're why focused, when you start with why, and that is the driving force behind what you do, not sharing or hitting silver or getting that next leg up to the volume that you're looking for, right? Those don't need to be your motivators. Those are secondary motivators. If your primary motivator is your why, you'll actually get a lot more done, believe it or not. You'll do a lot more of the things that are currently kind of uncomfortable to you, right? So think of it this way. And my heart-centered yellows, I am kind of speaking to you right now, okay? I am speaking to you right now. You have a mission and a drive to help a lot of people, and you're not necessarily particularly money motivated, right? You're not necessarily, you know, you're not looking for recognition in the way that, say, a red personality would be. You just want to make a difference, more often than not. And I know I'm speaking very broadly to yellow personalities in general. And if you don't know what I'm talking about, we will get to this shortly. Think about how many more people you can impact positively. Think about how many lives you can change, how many people you can help, if you're just focused on helping, right? And you just follow the process. It starts to feel less like sales, which is, this really isn't sales. Fundamentally, this is not sales. This is sharing, and then this is, is this for you or is this not for you? Oh, hey, you told me this was for you. I'm back to see if this is for you now, right? It's just a continued conversation around sharing. If we look at it this way and we focus on our why, you will get so much done in your business, and you will have a team full of yellow leaders. And I'm telling you guys, yellow personalities, the glue of a team, right? You guys are amazing. All right. Anyway, before I go too far off ahead of myself on the color wheel here, here's another really important thing, and this is why you need to be detached from outcomes. And I'm kind of talking to reds now. People can sniff out your intentions. People can tell if you're dead set on trying to convince them of something or to manipulate them in some way, or they could feel that way about it. If you're dead set on a yes for the sake of making a sale, i.e. being pushy, or if you're fuzzy on intent, meaning maybe you're self-doubting or you're unsure of yourself or you're, you know, the way a lot of us get, we're nervous, and it shows, right? When you go in and you aren't clear, you're not going to like the results that you get. If you go in and you are clear, but you're too clear and you're attached to the outcome, you're not going to like the results, right? So you go in with a clear heart, with your why being your intention, and sharing and asking for a decision, and that is where you're going to get the results that you want. And the results that you want in the big picture are going to come in step with the amount of times you're willing to go out and make these attempts to change lives by having these conversations. All right. And then finally, importantly, you guys, this is a process, all right? It's a process of repeating over and over again the steps that will get you enough yeses to grow. And closing, right? Getting a yes from someone, it's not the top of the mountain. It's a step on the path. Quick show of hands, how many of you have gotten someone to purchase, have shared and had someone purchase a premium starter kit, and then they turned into a ghost? Right? That's not the top of the mountain. Yes is not the top of the mountain. What you're looking to do is to help people facilitate a lasting change in their lives, and you have succeeded on your mission when you have done that as many times as is necessary. And of course, you receive the monetary reward for that when you do that successfully. Yes is just a step on the path. It is not the mountaintop. All right. So let's talk about this process. This is our five-step process. Always, always leads to yes. I'm going to spell these out for you here real quickly because I think you're going to find them very familiar, and then I'm going to break them down a bit. And remember, again, guys, totally color neutral, all right? See if this is familiar to you. Prospect, meaning search for opportunity. Have conversations that open up opportunities to invite, which is our next step. Invite someone to review information that helps them solve a problem. Step three, share the information that helps them solve a problem. Step four, follow-up, meaning immediately after they review the information, have them make a decision, which is the close, all right? And sometimes, a follow-up and close, maybe we flip those around depending on scheduling and things like that. We'll get to that in just a second. Everybody here right now, we're familiar with these five steps, right? Prospect, invite, share, follow-up, close. We're not speaking another language here, all right? We're going to break these down if any of this is unfamiliar to you. All right. So first, step one, prospecting. Again, color neutral. Context matters when you're prospecting. You need a reason to share the information that you have in a way that makes sense to the person that you're sharing with, right? Do your homework. Ask questions of the people around you, the people you're friends with, people who say stuff on social media, who you spark up conversations with. Do your homework. Ask them questions. Pay attention to what people share with you because they are showing you exactly how you need to show them what you have that can change their life, right? Quick show of hands. Does that make sense? You need to do your homework to get context. You need to have conversations to get context. Now, if you're a red personality, then maybe this doesn't come naturally to you. If you're a yellow, this is pretty easy. If you're a blue, it's second nature. You just need to pay better attention to the answers. All right. So when you're prospecting, all you're doing is having conversations and looking for opportunities where you can help, where you can solve problems, where you can assist people, where you can facilitate, where you have an opening, where you can say, "Hey, you know that thing you mentioned? Tell me more about what you want. I think I have something that might help you," right? And that's where we get into the invitation. And you also want to make sure that you listen more than you speak. Now yellows, excuse me, yellows and greens, this doesn't mean don't speak, okay? It does mean reds and blues to shut your ears off sometimes. But people will tell you what they need to know from you in order to make a decision. And I spoke wrong just a second ago. Reds and blues, sometimes you need to shut your mouth off, open your ears up. So listen more than you speak because people will always, always tell you what they need to know from you in order to make a decision, whether that decision is being open to review information that you have to share or being open to going ahead and placing that first essential rewards order, okay? All right. Then we go to inviting. Remember that you are not inviting for someone to watch you speak. You are not inviting for somebody to watch you give a presentation. You are not inviting to fill a room where you have a make and take. I mean, sure, if you enjoy doing make and takes, and those are working for your business, continue doing those. You are inviting people to review information so you can help them solve a problem that they have. If you want to get more yes, you need that context, that context that you get in step one by asking questions and listening twice as much. So you've done your homework. You're inviting so as to be able to help someone solve a problem. You're opening that door to sharing a solution to the problem that they've shared with you, all right? That's all inviting is. And then, so important, you guys, take your business seriously. And what I mean by this is you are setting the tone, right? You are deciding how you and your information are going to be received by someone else in the way that you invite. Be specific when you're speaking with someone. When you're proposing sharing information with someone that could change their life, set a specific date and time and expect that that person be accountable to you for it. There's nothing pushy or harsh about that. That is, you taking your business seriously and your why of helping people change their lives with the products that have changed yours, right? Let me get a hands up if you understand that. All right. Give accountability and expect accountability of others. Take your business seriously. I promise you guys, if you just start doing this one thing and start having people take your time seriously when you invite and you set a specific date and time, and you expect accountability from that person, you confirm it with them, and you follow up. When they don't show up, you are going to start changing the way people interact with you and how seriously they take the opportunity of working alongside you to solve that problem that they have, and then to change their life with product, and maybe even to change their financial life and working with you on your team. You decide how seriously people take that opportunity. You have the control of setting that tone, and it begins with the way that you invite, and you hold people accountable to when you show them information, all right? Now comes the share. Now, when you're sharing, right, and this is presenting, it is also just sharing. This is reflexive here. This is where you are showing or giving or delivering information. You are sharing Young Living. You are sharing product lines. However you go about doing this to solve a problem, you're positioning your solution to the problem they've shared with you and that you have talked about now at this point, right? Keep it simple. Keep it super simple. I'm looking at you greens. Don't over-deliver on the information here. Keep it really, really simple. And as often as possible, point to information, right? Now, I'm not saying don't give presentations. You should absolutely give presentations, especially if you're giving classes locally or you're doing classes online, but it's actually really, really helpful for you from a duplicative standpoint, right? If you want to grow your team in such a way that people feel empowered to be able to go out and do what you've done and grow a team of their own, right? If you want to recruit, this is a really important thing to keep in mind. As often as possible, where you can point to a resource so that other people say, "Oh, wow, that's all you have to do is point. All I have to do is say, 'Here, watch this video,' or 'Here, go to that, you know, this presentation that this person's putting on,' and then just listen. Like, that's all I have to do to share." That's a really easy prospect to duplicate, right? Like, that's an easy ask. That's not go out and learn the whole pharmacopeia of essential oils and then, you know, give an expert presentation. No, you don't have to be the guru in front of the room to duplicate. Actually, not being the guru in front of the room is more duplicable, right? In the grand scheme of things. Not really going into duplication and any more beyond that point in this webinar, but it is really important for you guys to understand that there's nothing wrong with pointing to a piece of information so long as it's relevant, and you've positioned it in such a way that helps someone solve a problem. Hands up. Makes sense? All right. And then, again, and this is along the lines of our last slide there and taking your business seriously, expect undivided attention, right? Expect people to take you and this information seriously. You take this information seriously. It's changed your life. You want to expect that undivided attention. So if you're going to be sharing with someone who is long distance, you're not just going to pop a link to your website in their email inbox and say, "Hey, look this over sometime when you have a chance," right? No. You're going to set a date and time, and you're going to sit down together, and they're going to look at information, and you're going to position it in a way that's going to help them solve the problem. You're consulting at this point, right? You've learned their problem. You've got the context. You've got them with you now, whether they're on the phone in another state, or they're sitting across from you at a coffee shop table, or you're at their house, or whatever. Expect their undivided attention and expect them to take this seriously. All right. And then finally, the close, all right? Actually, it's not finally. This is reflexive. I'll talk about that in just a second. You could be closing after following up if someone's not ready, but let's just say, best case, majority of the time, ideally, immediately after you share information with someone, you want to collect a decision as quickly as possible because the window of opportunity shrinks exponentially the further away you get from the time they reviewed the information in the context of the problem they told you they want to solve. All right. So here's how we close. Step one, ask at least one affirmative question. And this is actually something that you can, you can personalize this greatly based on what's comfortable to you in your color spectrum, but it needs to be an affirmative. This is a psychological thing. You need to have someone say yes, verbally say yes, acknowledge an affirmative. So an easy one that, say, a blue could do is, "Wasn't that awesome?" Right? Anyone could really do that. But think about something that is affirmative about the information that you just shared with them and ask that question so that you can get that first yes. Just an acknowledgement, "That was pretty cool," right? Like, "Isn't that amazing?" Yeah. Okay. Start with an affirmative. This is such a critical opener. You never say, "Well, what did you think?" That's not the answer. Start with an affirmative, okay? All right. Then you ask, and this is an affirmative as well, right? It's just, it's giving them an opportunity to speak further. So you say, now that they've acknowledged, "Yeah, that was pretty cool." Then you say, "Well, what did you like best?" And shut up and let them talk. All right. They're going to tell you what they like the most. And affirm them and say, "Yes, oh, my gosh, I love that, too. Tell me more," right? Make sure, blues and reds, you don't put your foot in your mouth here, and start over-explaining, over-talking, right? This is an important process that you have to follow. Don't deviate far from it. What did you like best? Let them talk. And then, so how do you see this solving the problem that you guys have actually come together around today, right? So the context by which you have decided to show this person and invited this person, and they've accepted the invitation to review this information, this context is under the guise of solving a problem that they've shared with you. So you acknowledge that problem. So how do you see this helping you with this thing that we've been talking about? And then shut up and let them talk, okay? And again, they're going to tell you in these questions here, the answers to these questions, they're going to share with you the reasons why they're going to say yes to Young Living. They're telling you why they're ready to sign up right now, okay? Listen closely. They're telling you. They're giving you everything that you need to make that yes a concrete sign on the dotted line. Let's get your kid in on the ER, all right? Here's a really important one, right? So this is where we start mitigating our no's. This is where we can mitigate no entirely, at least 85% of the time. I would say closer to 90 because typically, when people say no, it's not no forever, right? And I'll get into that here in just a little bit as well. On a scale of one to 10, I love using this question to close. The way that you go about doing this is you say, "All right." So they've just affirmed it's awesome. They told you what they liked best about it. They told you how they see this solving the problem you guys have been talking about together. So you say, on a scale of one to 10, with one being totally no and yes being, "Sign me up right now," where do you see yourself? Let them answer with a number, okay? Now, if they're 10, great, let's do this, right? If they're anything other than 10, you say, "Okay, well, what would it take for you to get from seven to 10 today?" And then shut up and listen, all right? And then shut up and listen, all right? And then, of course, you address that question, right, so if they say, well, it's. Um, you know, if I don't, I don't have money in my account right now, or I need to talk to my spouse or whatever the case is. Last week's training and in the week before, I think potentially as well, and again, we'll link the more recent trainings underneath this video. Uh, in the recording, but um. You set if if you if you have a need that they need to, if they have a need to go off and think. If they need to consult with a spouse, if you need to provide additional information that you don't have available at that moment in time. What you do right here is you go straight ahead to booking the exact date and time that you will meet up. You'll provide the additional information, you will meet with the spouse and answer the spouse's questions. And you will get them signed up, right, so at this point. You are scheduling your close, right, so at this, you know, what would it take to get from X to ten and they're not ready to do it right now? Um, obviously, say, are you ready to get started if they are a nine or a ten, well, hey, let's let's get started, well, there's always going to be more to learn here, right? Um, but if they aren't ready right now. But they've given you all of these affirmatives, they're not a no. They're just a not right now, so don't drop this ball. Schedule your follow up. Schedule the date and time that you're going to get together. Finalize with any questions that you have and any education you need to provide to a significant other or spouse. And off to the races, sign you up, let's get your premium starter kit, right? This close process works. And if you keep yourself and others accountable to the decisions that they've made, to the yeses that they've given, then you will get a yes. At least fifty percent more if you do this with every prospect that you have for the next six months, I promise you, come to me and tell me that you've done this. And I will, I I will. I will be your coach for the next year. And you won't pay me anything if you do all of these things for the next six months. And doesn't work, obviously, you got to provide me proof, I know this works, you guys, so let's do this. All right, so then you ask, are you ready to get started? Now, here's the follow up, this is an important one to to cover as well because a lot of us, especially. Um, especially yellows and greens. Uh, will tend to avoid the follow up because it feels a little. Aggressive if we look at it the wrong way, which most of us do. Um, all right, so. This is really important for everybody, color neutral. Take your business seriously, schedule those follow up calls to provide the objection clearing information. That you need to where necessary and to hold people accountable to future start dates. Really important for everyone, especially those of us who try to passively communicate because it feels a little less, I don't know, weird or pushy or salesy or whatever. Do not use texting or direct messages, Facebook Messenger and so on to follow up with people. Set times, dates and times, take your business seriously, use a calendar and put people on it. And don't take time that's not on your calendar. Don't allow people to waste your time because you are a business person with a big why and big things to achieve, right? Now, your follow up may happen. Um, after the fact, right, it may be that somebody can't hop back on the phone right away to follow up on information. Um, your close ideally needs to happen immediately, immediately after someone reviews info, right? Now, this doesn't mean that you ran into somebody at a trade show and they. Learned a little bit about this and that, and then you call them up the next day and you say, hey, are you ready to get started? No, you start that prospecting conversation and then you offer an opportunity to sit down and further explore. How you can be of better help to that person, you follow these steps through, right, you get leads from trade shows. If you get a sign up at a trade show, that's fantastic, but if you follow this consultative approach. Um, by the letter, no matter what your personality color is, you are going to get great results. And one of the most important things that you can do, and I've been driving this home in our past three live work session trainings. Is you gotta use a calendar, you gotta put people on it and you gotta put your follow ups on it. Because people will never ever be accountable to you if you don't hold them accountable and they won't take your business seriously if you don't. So do yourself that favor and make sure that you have that direct communication, there's nothing aggressive about it, it's simply accountable and good business. Okay, now, if you don't follow this process fully, no matter what your personality color is. A yes is just a lucky break. If you follow this process, you always get to yes unless somebody has just got this idea in their head that they just can't be helped and they're just. Well, we'll be honest, we're not, that's not someone that we want to have around us, right? So, a yes is a lucky break if we don't follow the process, stick to the process, it does not change with with personality colors. You can adapt it, right? So, I want to go over some closing motivation and mindset to really help you guys better understand how easy closing actually is and how much it is really just. A step in the process, right, it's it's a, it's a stone in the road, it's not the top of the mountain. First. You are out to solve problems. Not to sell product, you are out to help people solve problems. Not to sell product. If you start looking at your business this way, sharing becomes a thousand times easier, doesn't it? You're also out to look and listen for opportunities to solve those problems. Not to just blindly promote, because if you say, oh, hey, Mint, it's fifty percent off today, somebody could see that and be like, yeah, so what, I can buy it at, you know, Amazon and isn't that the same thing? And then you start getting into conversations that you shouldn't even be having, right? You're out to listen. And to solve problems and to look for opportunities to listen and solve problems, that's it, right? The right questions. Always, always yield the right answers, you remember that closing process? Ask the affirmative, what did you like about it, how did you see this solving your problems? Ask more good questions and you will get more of the yes answers that you're looking for. If there's one thing that you take away from today, no matter what your color perspective is. Is that better questions yield better answers, get really, really good at asking better questions. It's, that's the number one thing, if you want to be more influential, if you want to be more successful. That is one of the most important things that you need to learn how to do is ask better questions, all right? And then listen twice as much as you talk. If you're a red or a blue, maybe listen three times as much as you talk. And always, always ask more questions. Always ask more questions, all right? Now, most people, and this is a really important thing that most of us don't understand or realize, most people are open to new ideas, right? They're open to new products, to new practices. To network marketing in general, most people are actually kind of open. But they're blinded or held back by their own limiting beliefs. Wasn't there a time when you could say that was true about yourself, show of hands? Weren't you in that position once? Did you not have a breakthrough and benefit immensely for having made that shift? The thing is, is that people rarely tell you no, they're not telling you no, they're telling themselves no. Really important thing to understand, don't ever take it personally. It's not about you, it is about them, right? And the thing is, is we're here to help facilitate those mindset shifts. We're here to solve problems, not sell products. Really, really important, remember that, you have the power to facilitate. Growth and healing in others, so understand that what seems like resistance. Is it a resistance to you or to product or to the model or to whatever? It's resistance with limiting belief. You have to be a facilitator of removing limiting beliefs, you have to be a facilitator of of openness, right? And 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 of healthier ways of thinking. If you can start facilitating mindset shifts in the people around you. By asking those better questions. You'll start to find that the whole world is pretty darn open to whatever you have to share, right? You have that power. And yellows, I'm actually uniquely speaking to you, you can carry a credibility that other colors don't necessarily carry, and we'll get to that very shortly, I promise. Also, guys, what we tell ourselves and and what we tell others, isn't always the truth of a situation. It's your job to dig deeper with those questions and facilitate that shift. And the objections, this is a really important thing to remember, you guys, the objections that you get will often reflect a need for your own mindset work. I found this to be the case very early on in my career, I was broke as broke can be as a single mom. Took out a high interest credit card, my credit was already wrecked, to get into my first network marketing business. I had money mindset problems and do you know? I had so many price and money objections. Once I started shifting my own money mindset. I never got those questions or objections again. I never got the pyramid questions again. Right, you have to work on your own mindset and you will off, you'll often find. That the things that are coming up as objections when you're out doing this work, when you're out following this process. You'll often find that there is some kind of a mirror there. In terms of 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 mindset work that you could be doing for yourself. That is. A realization that I never saw coming. Uh, that was sort of a hindsight twenty twenty and it's a really important thing to remember, we could always improve ourselves. And the more we improve ourselves, the more we can help others and of course, the better we can become at these processes that help us change the world one person at a time. All right, so now, who's ready to get some color context here, I know there's this promise of colors, I would go in all like, oh, well, this isn't about color, right? We're getting to color now. All right, so. First, for those of you guys who are not familiar. Who have never taken a color test before, if you don't know what your color is, I want to share with you a couple of resources. Um, okay, this one here, markasetta.com, he is a trainer in the industry, a mentor of mine, and he has, I believe, the most thorough. Um, breakdown of the colors, he's been teaching this for a very long time, I really, really like his, it's not the only one, but I love it, that's my two cents. There's also from Young Living, a Young Living family here, jacobadamo.com. Um, there's a test here, it is under construction to some degree, but I tested it yesterday. And it is still producing results, so you could check, you could try this one out as well. And then Big Al, all of us know Big Al here, right, big trainer in the industry, bigalbooks.com, if you look for his. Color test, you can find one there as well. All right, so make sure you guys that when you go out and you take your color test, that you read up on all of them, not just yours. Really, really important. And use what you learn about yourself and others to improve your results, to follow those same steps that I've already taught you here today. Improve those based on what you learn about your color and about what you can observe in others. And remember, the path to yes, the process is color neutral, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. It works for everyone, you use your colors to fine tune the process, all right? So here's what understanding colors can do for you. First, you can understand others better so that you can become a more effective communicator. A better inviter, presenter, closer, team leader and problem solver. All right? So that you can communicate more effectively. And then, you can understand yourself better. So that you can better identify where you can self improve. Right, so it's a personal development tool and being able to see that, okay, I'm a little more of this, a little less of that, and maybe that's why I have hangups. Around this thing or that, so I can focus on those things to bring them into better balance, right? Because colors, they aren't indicative of imbalances or balances. Colors are simply tendencies that display in different ways depending on whether or not they're in balance. So we can be more observant of ourselves and of things we see and others around us so that we can be of better service to others. And of course, a better service to our own growth. Now, we use those colors to understand how to meet people where they are. So that you can better facilitate that yes, so that you can better facilitate those mindset shifts. That are necessary to break down the limiting beliefs that keep people from making decisions that could change their lives for the better. Right, that's what colors are about, they're not to identify around things that make you uncomfortable and use them as a crutch to say, oh, well, I'm this, so I can't do that. No, what they are is a tool for you to be able to facilitate positive shifts in yourself and in others. And your goal, at the end of the day, is to make yes easy and painless, and if it's no, okay, fine too, I'm moving on to the next, trying to find the next yes, right? So here's how we work with prospects based on their color profiles. You want to go ahead and take a screenshot of this, you may want to do that, um, I think what we'll do, I I will, I will save this as a PDF and I will send this out to you guys via email. Uh, if you aren't subscribed, you better go over to get oiling.com forward slash weekly work sessions if you want to get a copy of this. All right, so. Uh, these are categorized, our four colors here. Uh, based on the speed and means by which we interact with people and with ideas and concepts. Now, we've talked a bit about yellow, yellow is a very common color. Uh, for Young Living members, I I actually think that Young Living as an entity is a very yellow entity, it's a very help forward. Right, it's, it's a very earth and animal and people loving company, right, the profile of the company itself is very yellow, it tracks a lot of yellow personalities. Now, let's talk about yellows. Um, well, actually, no, I I have done this for myself to keep me on track, blue, I'm a blue, by the way. And red, all right, so actually, what we're going to talk about first is red, so down here, you see this, this square. Um, where where we've got it highlighted, your reds are the in charge type, the take charge type. They always know best, right? They're know it alls, uh, some, like sometimes know it alls out of, out of balance. Um, but they tend to be knowledgeable leaders, they they tend to be CEOs, entrepreneurs, risk takers. Um, upper management in the corporate world, uh, they're on a constant quest to improve both themselves, processes, things like that, these are, these are sharpen the sword people. Um, they're focused on the bottom line and return on investment, they love being recognized. Out of balance, there is an ego element that 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 can be. Uh. Problematic if if red is out of balance. Um, reds tend to be a more money motivated personality type, these are great, they're go getters, right, these are people you'd love to have on your team, they'll be big recruiters. Um, they're quick to act, but they can also be quick to burn out, right? Flame burns bright and fast, all right, so let's talk about closing a red. This is really, I hope this will be really valuable to you guys, so if you're working with a red personality, let's talk about how to work with them toward a close. First, you want to make sure that you're getting to the point quickly and respecting their time. You want to make sure that you edify their strengths and their status. Right? You want to ask questions and let them speak. But remember, you are the one leading the charge here, all right? And then, don't defer or shrink, reds are take charge people and they will bulldoze you. They they certainly can bulldoze you if you aren't standing your ground in a situation like this. So red loves and respects power and you will earn the respect. Of reds, of people who could be powerful recruiters and salespeople in your organization. By holding your power and honoring their position. And getting to the point quickly and not being afraid to ask for the yes or the no, reds respect that. And you'll want reds, reds are fast growers, all right? Now, let's talk about blues, blues are fun loving, life of the party, adventurous people. Uh, they love traveling, uh, they tend to work in marketing and creative careers. Um, they love meeting new people, absolute social butterflies. Um, they love most things, they tend to be enthusiastic people, happy go lucky, but if it's not fun. They'll chase a squirrel somewhere else, they tend to self identify as a little more ADD. Um. Colloquial, colloquially speaking, um, they tend to be talkative people, busy minded, can be scatterbrained and disorganized. They, uh, this is also a type that that may like to think that they're good at multitasking, but they're not so good at multitasking. Um, they tend to be colorfully dressed, loud personality, they tend to be a little trendier, uh, in terms of like their their outward fashion. These are the loud dress folks, you know, the the leopard prints and the bright colors. Um, if you haven't noticed, I I am, I am at least half this, if you've watched any of my trainings. Um, they have great energy, but they can, because they are. Um, they can be sort of scatterbrained in their creative mind, they can lack follow through. Right, so you know, that whole idea of of if somebody's like, oh, my God, I really love this, it's just, I got to talk to, you know, I got to talk to to my spouse. They'll forget when they walk out of the room that they need to to follow up with you. This is a type that you want to make sure that you set that appointment so that you follow up. They would love this, they would do great with this. Blues are phenomenal network marketers because they are the person, when they're in a room, eyes go to them. People want to be around them because they're fun, right, they're great in this industry. Uh, you have to provide the parameters around them to kind of. Move them, facilitate their movement toward the things that they need to do. So here's how you work with a blue toward a close. First, you need to share in that excitement and that engagement because if this is boring, if it's not fun, they're not going to. because if this is boring, if it's not fun, they're not going to want to do it. Ask affirmative questions often to keep that engagement up, right? Blues love to talk. If you open the door, they will walk into it with all the worms, all right? And excited words. Um, so make sure that you're providing those opportunities for that openness. You also want to make sure that you don't deep dive too far into details. Again, because blue is a really fast thinker, but they, but they aren't a, um, they don't grasp and hold on to in the same way that say like Greens do. Um, you, you don't, I'm not saying brush over the details. I'm just saying that the value sets are going to be more around how fun this is and how it's so great to help people and work with people and animals and, you know, and, and it's going to be so much fun, right? So too much details are going to make a blue fall asleep. All right, and then focus on the fun. Again, blue, super fun, fun personalities. All right, now we're talking about yellows. So yellows are helpful, supportive, nurturing, selfless, glue of the family, glue of the team, hold people together. Um, you really provide the nurturing culture on a team and in a family. These are nurses and teachers by profession, full-time, stay-at-home moms, caregivers, baby and animal lovers. You have a high degree of integrity, loyalty, and people see you as highly credible as a result. You have that perception naturally among people because you are a steady steadfast person. Um, you probably do really well with routine. Um, and, and you like things to be predictable. You, you like for things to be um as expected, comfortable. Your style is more practical, right? It's more down to earth um versus the blue who is very, you know, very, very extra, right? Um, you don't love the limelight, you know? If, if, if the spotlight was shined on you, you would try to step away from it, right? Um, you're help motivated versus money motivated. And you're actually pretty good at multitasking, all right? So yellows, let's talk about how we close with yellows. First, be gentle and consultative. I'm talking to you Reds and sometimes Blues. Be gentle and consultative with a conversational approach. Connect over your world-changing why. Remember, yellow personalities, they're not really in it for the money. I mean, sure, they're in it to some degree, you know, if they're, they want to build a business, right? But it's really about helping. It's about helping first. Um, so you've got your why, you've got your reason why you're doing this that's bigger than trying to get a yes and making a sale right now. That's the kind of thing that you want to share with a yellow and you want to talk about theirs too. The idea of going on a mission together to save lives, the idea of linking arms together and, and working together is a very yellow, uh, a yellow attribute and something that will make a yellow feel very comfortable and make a yellow say, yes, I want to do that with you, right? It's a yellow is not going to be a natural salesperson in the way that we typically think about it. A yellow is going to be somebody who cares deeply for the people around them and wants to make a difference. And so you can connect on the, um, on the Young Living Foundation, right? You can connect on all kinds of great things. This company does, it's such a yellow company. Um, connect over the whys. Yellows really, really respond to that um and will appreciate that consideration. Um, and then be about the mission, not the money, of course. Uh, yellows are really one of the first personalities, I think, that would sniff out intention if you're really just out to, to push toward a sale. Yellows are very sensitive people who are very sensitive to anything that feels pushy or manipulative, all right? All right, moving on to Greens. These are our super analytical folks. Um, logical, not emotional is sort of the rule here. Information-driven. Um, these are your researchers, engineers, accountants, programmers. Um, these are folks who tend to be hungry for information, for understanding, for knowledge. Um, they need to be right, not aggressively so in the way that Reds do. Uh, but they, they, they need to have the right information, right? Um, these are planners, budgeters, controllers. Um, you know, in terms of function inside of organizations and in families. Um, they require lots of details and lots of time. And they can be slow to make decisions because they want to know so much, right? So let's talk about closing Greens. Focus on solutions to problems that they've shared with you in those previous exploratory conversations. All of the work that you've done up to the point of sitting down to close a green is going to show you exactly what the green needs to hear from you in order for them to say yes. Don't offer details that are not asked for because you're going to open up doors that will require deep dives into additional information that will not allow for a yes today, even though a yes could have happened today if we just connected the dots and said, you said this problem, here is this solution, there is enough information, let's do this, right? Um, so if you open up another door, you fall down a rabbit hole of information and they don't say yes for another six months. They'll eventually say yes. Greens take a very long time to say yes, most of the time. But once you get a green, you keep a green. Important to know, I love my Greens. All right, so solve one problem at a time with your green personalities. It's okay to not know everything. If you've done your homework and you know the help that they need from you and you present what you have in a, in a way that solves the problem for that person, you're, you got what you need. It's time for yes, right? Um, it's okay to not know everything. I think that Greens, uh, if, if they are made to know, once you have established that the problem is solved, that once they get into this, there is a whole wide world of information and research and classes and all of this stuff that you can dive into and learn about and help others get to know as well. I think that Greens actually do very well with Young Living um because of just the vast amount of information uh that, that is available about the products and what they can do and all of the, just everything around it, body systems, everything. All right, so finally, with Greens, be patient. Greens can take a while to make a decision. And the thing is, is unlike any other color in the spectrum, Greens will tend to stick with the decisions they made once they've made them because they have researched them to the moon and back, right? They, they, they're in their decision and they are where they are. And Greens are stable uh in terms of like team culture. I always loved, loved, loved the Greens on my team because they, you know, where we would have Reds, you know, bouncing around, you know, burning out, dropping off and, you know, Blues are off in space and my Greens and yellows are like foundation, right? Um, Greens tend to stick uh and, and they're a lot of fun and they're very resourceful people, they're very knowledgeable people. Um, but don't try to push a green because they won't move. All right, all right, so now let's talk about your colors. Now we've talked about the considerations that you can make. I think the most important way for you to use colors is to understand other people better, right? Obviously, we need to understand ourselves, but in terms of how this can impact your business the most, it needs to be about you recognizing colors and being sensitive to those when you're communicating with other people. But let's talk about how you can work with your colors as well because again, this is important. All right, so if you're red, be mindful of this. Overt authority, right? You, you have a tendency, if you're a red personality, to be authoritative. Uh, and authoritative personalities uh are respected by other Reds. Um, they cause Blues to get in line and follow, right? Uh, Greens will listen to the degree that they find you credible. You will shrink yellows and make them run away. You don't want to do that. So be aware of overt authority if you are red. Don't over-communicate. Reds out of balance can be a little bit of a know-it-all and we can oversell, we can overcomplicate, we can say too much. It's really important that we try to listen more. Uh, temper your persuasion. Reds do tend to be uh skilled communicators who are good at persuasion. Um, but you want to be very mindful, again, just of, like of the colors that we've just been through and how you communicate with the different colors. Just understanding that you can, as a red, can be taken as and you can be pushy, right? And then make a commitment, if you are a red personality, to listen three times, not just two times. You have two ears, pretend like you have a third one. Listen three times more than you already think you do um so that you are allowing others to show you what they need from you. You think you have all the answers and a lot of times you do. That's why you're a leader, you're a natural born leader. Uh, but you will be a more effective one if you listen more to what people are telling you that they need from you. And this is really important in the sharing process because it's easier to close, right? It's so, so easy to close if somebody shared a problem with you and you have put a solution in front of them, right? All right, Blues, be mindful of this. First, you want to get organized with a contact manager. We have one of these in GetOiling. If you don't have it right now, you can start for a dollar today, GetOiling.com. Use a contact manager and make sure that you are following up with your prospects. Put everything into the system and use a calendar to keep yourself organized uh mentally and otherwise. Make sure that you are staying focused in your conversations with others on solving a problem because you could get really passionate and excited and just start talking about something entirely different, right? And, and, and wind up so far away from where you were supposed to be and helping this person that you're with go from point A to point B to solve a problem, all right? You want to emphasize substance over hype. Um, your excitement is um is an asset, uh, but too much of it can make a green or a red kind of go eh, I don't, you know, this isn't my thing, I'm out, right? And then uh your enthusiasm is an asset, use that to your advantage. Uh, but again, making sure that you're not, uh, you're not bouncing around at too high a frequency uh for someone else to receive you. All right, if you are yellow, it is okay to take control and it doesn't make you pushy. You are the leader in a process that is going to facilitate change in someone else's life. You taking control of that process is not pushy, okay? It's okay and you should be in control. And the thing is, is you as a yellow personality already have great credibility with others because you are the type of person who is steady, who is somewhat predictable, who is consistent, who is supportive, who is loving and who is selfless, right? These are all very yellow characteristics. You already have credibility with others and you don't have to convince them of that. So when you step into your authority, it's gently, people pay attention and they, and, and they're going to follow along with your recommendations and trust you. Yellows are actually, I think, I, I believe this to be true, yeah. The yellows are by and large the easiest of the colors to trust for every other color, every other color set. Yellows are the easiest to earn, they earn trust the most easy, right? So understand that. It's not that hard to step into your intentions of helping others. Um, and there's nothing uh overbearing or wrong about that. All right, your success and your confidence will come with repetition of the process. As you repeat it, as it starts to become a routine, you do really well with routines, but see, you've already got them. You need to adopt, adopt this new one and the more you follow it, the better you'll get at it and you'll be able to lead by example very, very naturally. And then helping others is empowering them, not doing for them, right? I see this a lot in our community. We have a lot of yellow personalities in our community and what we tend to do is we want to do for our team, right? We want to do for our customers when what we should be doing is tempering that desire to do for by empowering them to, right? We want to empower people to make better choices, empower them to grow themselves, all right? We can't mommy everybody all the time, anyway. All right, we're almost done here. Mind your green, guys. If you are a green personality, the devil is in the details. So don't overdo it, don't overshare, don't overcomplicate. Stick to one problem at a time. Most people require a fraction of the information that you require to make a decision. Keep that in mind so you don't over-deliver or overwhelm with details. The simplest path to a yes requires the least possible amount of information. This is true about any kind of decision-making, any kind of product, uh, selling, conversion, what have you. Keep it simple. Follow the process, wash, rinse, repeat. You're great at this, it works. Just follow the steps that we've talked about in the beginning of our webinar today. And then keep it simple because simple duplicates. You are a brainiac, most people aren't. You don't want people thinking that they have to be a brainiac to be good at this, right? So keep it simple. All right, so you can get your follow-up system, your tracking system, your events management, your Zoom meetings, email, text marketing, training and so much more inside of our system. Everything that you need, no matter what color you are, to help you grow your Young Living business. We have inside of GetOiling uh and it is just $1 for your first month for you to get started with this. So you can just go over to GetOiling.com if you're not with us already and get started with your system. All right, we're going to open this up for a little bit of Q and A. Hey Greg, what color are you?
Uh, mixture, red and green, which isn't too surprising looking at your charts.
Yeah, hey, tell you what, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna scroll up here. We'll take our Q and A and I'm gonna keep the, oop, oh, I'm gonna keep these right here on the screen so you guys can look at them while we're going over any, any questions that we have today. Um, yeah, if you guys haven't noticed, and I've talked about this a fair amount, I am blue and red. Um, they vary based on the day, but I'm, I am a blue-red with, uh, green is my last, but see Reds, I, I, I like seeing it in the spectrum like this because you see how we organize the way that we look at information and deal with information and the way we interact with people. And so Greens and Reds are actually kind of similar in their information processing. They just act on it differently, right? They act on it with different speed. And so we have, that's why we have these columns here. Um, so what, whatever organizational capacity and process-oriented capacities that I possess, which I do, of course, I wouldn't be able to teach this if I didn't. Um, as a blue, that's not a strength, right? It's actually quite a bit of a weakness. Um, it's, it's interesting to see it laid out this way, for sure. All right, what kind of questions have we got here? I'm not able to open up uh and keep this, I can't get the chat and the Q and A open while I have this. Uh, so Greg, if, if you are able to.
Sure, yeah, Martha, Martha has one here. Does Young Living have a color chart of how many ranked royal crown, diamond, crown diamond and diamonds? I'm curious how many are yellows, right? Not aware of anything, but um if anyone knows, that's a really good question. That'd be really cool, you know? I know they have their website with their, the list of who's everyone, you know, who's on there in those ranks, so that'd be really nice that they would have their color there too. But I, I'm not aware, that'd be awesome.
That's really, that's really interesting. Well, tell you what, if, if you're curious, um, one of the best things that you can do is to get really good at reading colors and people um because they, they tend to show pretty clearly. Um, and the better you can recognize them, the better you can communicate with others. And I mean, uh, to what limited degree you have interaction with the leadership and the folks that you're, you're wondering about. Um, you, you can actually identify some of those, those characteristics yourself. Uh, one of the trainers, uh, Marcus Seda with, uh, he has one of the more involved quizzes. Uh, he actually has a DVD series. I used to give it to my teams um called, uh, oh gosh, what is it called? Living in Full Color, I think is the name of it. Um, where he really dives into like what the different colors mean and how to use them. Uh, there's a number of trainings and things like that out there. Like I mentioned, Big Al has a book. Um, getting to know these colors or, or just generally studying personalities is always, always a good move if you are on the path of, of leadership and growth. Um, it's, it's, it's a worthwhile um thing to get into. Do you have any questions? Comments, concerns?
There are no other questions too that I'm seeing. Um, so yeah, go ahead and drop them in there if you have any. Um, Kelly says I don't have a question, but this is really settling for me. Uh, thank you. Debbie says learning how to communicate with people is always a bonus.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, Kathy just said I'm mainly a yellow with some blue and green. I don't feel comfortable when someone asks me how much an individual item costs. I do explain that you can buy retail, which is good, but I think it costs too much and bundle pricing, Vince.
Hmm, okay, so I think the, the question to ask yourself there is, well, do you think that they cost too much? If it, it, does it make you uncomfortable because you agree with them? Or does it make you uncomfortable because you have to defend, you feel like you have to defend uh your position there with the pricing of the products? Here's, here's how I would handle that, right? Um, so that you feel better prepared and more comfortable. And you don't have to go into extreme detail. This really applies to any question that, that's asked that would, that we might have like a defensive sort of emotional reaction to is, I don't know everything about what, you know, about that. I don't know everything about everything, but here's what I do know. Here's what I do know, right? Um, there's, I don't know. It, it depends, it depends on your personality color, right? And what feels natural to you. Obviously, me being part red, it's very easy for me to say like, like, I, I don't know about that, but let me tell you, like, here's, here's a truth about this, right? That's not going to feel the same coming from a yellow personality. But what you do want to make sure that you focus on is, is what you know, right? Because there's, there's a million things about Young Living, um, about, about life in general that you don't know. Because there's a million things about young living, about life in general, that you don't know. And you're not always going to know everything, even greens, right? Focus on what you do know. Focus on the benefits, or the solution rather, to the problem that they were looking to solve. If you have done the homework and then this is placed in front of them as a solution, it could just be a matter of you responding with, "Well, look, like, yes, you can buy that for $15 on Amazon, but do you have any idea where that came from?" Would you be willing to put that into your body not knowing where that came from? I've, you know, if you've been out to the farms, I've been to the farms. Or, you know, "Here, here's a list of our farms. You can go to them and you can actually see." Can you say that about those other places where they pay so much less, right? There's also the, well, I mean, do you pay better money to make sure that you're eating good food? Isn't that important to you? Like, so there's... You can turn it around with questions or you can say, "Look, I don't have the answers to all the questions, but here's what I do know. It does this, it's done this for me, it solved this problem for me. And, you know, and here it is." Are you ready to get started? Seeing some more stuff pop up in the Q and A and I can't... I see the things like blinking, but I can't look at them.
Sorry, I'm muted here. Yeah, I think that, yeah, there's no more in the chat here. Debbie mentioned it's different than value. That's awesome. But over in Q and A, we have, that has another question about a different topic related to anniversary dates. I guess if no one else has any other questions, I can read that one here. So she says, "I know this is not a part of today's topic. I wasn't able to find the monthly anniversary dates in GetOiling. I can't find how to do it. I tried to filter, but it didn't work. Somehow, I stumbled all the June anniversaries last week. I stumbled on July anniversaries now. Can't pull it up. I can't find it." Okay, sure. So what I could probably do, I could...
You want to do a screenshot?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull up the window here just to make that. Let's see here. I can... Where's the button for sharing? Zoom? Here we go. Okay, so one second. Let me get this pulled up here. And, okay, alright, should be sharing here. And so where to find the filter? Martha is under manage in the contacts link. And of course, you probably know where the filters button is, but click this. Here's the anniversary month and year. You can search by either year, month, or sorry, yeah, month, year, or both. So that, you know, if you want to search for everyone who has an anniversary date in April, you can do that. This test account has anything that is... Okay, there are a couple, I guess, that show up. April, or you can pick a year, multiple years. So you could do like April and June people, or April-June 2015. So you can combine them however you want to, but that's basically where it's at. So hopefully that's helpful here for you.
We had a question from Camille. This is a good one. She said, "For a long time, I believed I am one-quarter each color. Is this possible?" The answer is yes. Everybody's different. What I really love about Marc Acetta's testing is that you actually get the percentages of your colors. So you'll actually see, you know, you could be like 40/40, you know, 10 and 10. Or you could be, you know, 25/25/25/25. Yeah, I've never seen that, like equal proportion. That means it's not possible. So yes, you could be a combination of those things. Again, it's less about self-identification than it is about identifying patterns, strengths, weaknesses, and seeing where those parallels are with yourself so that we can stop identifying with things that aren't serving us and start working toward things that do. And then, most critically, being able to be a more effective communicator, to be able to read others so as to be able to facilitate communicating with them better. Yeah, I'm so glad you liked it. Awesome. Hey, so if you guys, while we're here, before we go, I know we ran a little long today. Is there any topic that you would like to see covered? Go ahead and put those in our comments before we pop off. Would love to hear more about training that would help you in growing your young living business. If you are watching this as a recording on YouTube, put it in the comments below the video. We would love to help you more. And of course, you could always send us your questions to info@getoiling.com and we may even bring you out and work with you live on a weekly work session. If there's a project that you're working on, you want to build a funnel, whatever it is, you're stuck, we're here to help you. And that's what these sessions are for. So, alright, Kim says, "Outside-the-box ideas for using landing pages." Alright, I like that. I will put that down. Thank you. Oh, be a fun one. I like fun ones. "Would love to see more about running effective Facebook ads." Okay. "Still confused on sways and campaigns, Martha." Okay, we actually have two trainings on YouTube about sway. And actually, if you go to getoiling.com/swayfunnel, we have bonus training on sways that you can access as well. Awesome. And I think we'll do some more with sway. That's probably, just pound-for-pound, the most popular training we've done in terms of views on YouTube. So I guess that means there's more sway. Debbie loves the help button on the site. Awesome. Trying to combine sway with landing pages, yes. So Kim, there is a... If you go to our weekly work session playlist on YouTube, you will find that there are a couple of trainings there on sway that actually teach you how to use a sway as a lead magnet in and of itself, where it gets delivered when somebody enters their name and email, and also how you can put it into a custom page. So the sway can be a deliverable, basically. Just like you would be able to, you know, send a PDF or something to someone. Awesome. Hope you enjoy it. Alright, well, I hope you guys have a fantastic week. Next week is the Fourth of July. There will be a training. We won't be here live for it. If you want to submit any questions that you have for us beforehand, we're happy to answer those in any way that we can. And be on the lookout for your email for that link to that live broadcast of our training. And if you're going to be at a convention two weeks from now, because we're with it two or three, three weeks. We will have one more live, no? Is it?
It is. Yeah, three weeks, I guess.
Three weeks, alright, yeah. So on the 11th, yeah, we'll be back here live on the 11th. You'll see us here live one more time before then. But we will be at Aroma Sharing before the event. And on the 11th, when we come back, so in two weeks, we're going to be sharing with you some promotions that are coming up. You're gonna like them super much. Alright, so we appreciate you guys. And if you have not started with this yet, join our community, get all the resources that you need for your young living business. Head over to getoiling.com, get started today for $1. And we will see you on the next weekly work session.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.
Bye.